All right. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to Government Affairs with the Dallas Area Chamber of Commerce. Today, our guest is City Councilor Scott Randall. But before we do that, we will go around the room and just do a short intro of each of you. And if you have something that's going on with your organization, also be sure to use the chat to put those links in there so that we can all grab those and be have good reminders. I will watch the chat for Scott, also watch for those hands raised or someone jumping up and down in their chair. Either of those will work to get my attention. So with that, let's start with Dan Spotts.
Thank you, Lisa. Good morning, everyone. Dan Spotts, Columbia Gorge Community College. Nothing dramatically new to report, just keeping things on track in terms of working toward Affordable Childcare Center in the Dells, the Agricultural Technology Program. We are making steady progress at that. Aviation Maintenance Technician Training, in addition to the programs we launched this past fall. So the next big step is going to be groundbreaking, not a groundbreaking, but really the the belated ribbon cutting for the Skill Center, trying to find a date for that in the spring, once COVID conditions allow. We had to postpone that last fall. We don't want to do that again, so we don't have a date yet, but stay tuned. Thank you.
Awesome. I look forward to coordinating that date with you. So David Peters.
Good morning, everybody. Dave Peters, Columbia Casket Housing, Mid-Columbia Housing Authority. We have vouchers for renters. We have ownership counseling, ownership payment programs, home repair programs, and hopefully before too long, a community land trust. So hopefully I'll be keeping you in touch with that. Thank you.
Awesome. Scott McKay.
Scott McKay, with the Mid-Columbia Senior Center. A couple of things is that our new director, Rob Garrett, has started this week, and he will be taking over, and I think it'd be a fantastic fit for the center. The Saturday Night Bingo, we're starting restarting that again. We feel like the surge is has passed that surge of COVID cases, and so we're going to start again, and that's at 5:30 every Saturday. And then, the other thing we discussed in our board meeting is that sometimes people aren't aware of our new-to-you shop. They may think it was at a senior center, it's just folks clothes for old folks, that type of stereotypes that people may have. And we have a high-quality selection of good-quality used clothes that our volunteers sort through, and we keep the best and then donate the rest to the other stores in the community. But we have a very small space, so we have to only choose the very best. And so I encourage folks to come by Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturdays from 10 to 1. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Scott, real quick on those notes, could you make sure that we get the information for the bingo so we can put you on the community calendar? That we also, I would do a flyer or something for the new-to-you, so we can put that in the e-blast and let people know that it's there and exists. And then, I think you sent us, but I'm not sure, the AARP with the taxes. Do we have a flyer for that?
Not that I am aware of.
If we could, that would be great. We've gotten calls and we've been directing them to you.
Yeah, we, we don't really administer that program. We just help folks get signed up for appointments, so directing them to us is just fine. That's a good way of doing it.
I like channeling them through you, so if there's any other activities that are kind of same demographic, you guys can help them with that. So thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
Brian Tuck.
Brian Tuck, retired.
You're short and sweet today. Thanks. Travis Dre.
There we go. Hi, good morning, everyone. Travis Dre, Mid-Columbia Medical Center. I'm going to copy and paste a link from an article. We had Don Wensler, our Vice President of Patient Services, on NPR with Will Smith, and then Will kind of took his quotes and put them into an article just on the difficulty that rural healthcare hospitals are facing trying to transfer patients out of the hospital. And then, in addition, I'll be super excited. Hopefully by next week, we hosted a reporter, a photographer from the Oregonian that reached out and wanted to kind of come and look through the lens of rural healthcare from our nurses, our hospitalists, our ER team, our surgeons. So we spent the whole day with basically 10 to 7 with the reporter and photographer, and they got to see the extremely talented, amazing staff that we have taking care of our community. So I'll be anxious to share that when it comes out. And it's a platform that is probably, it's an amazing opportunity, just print alone, and the Oregonian is over near 300K in visibility, and Organ Live is 10 million in visibility. So that is tremendous opportunity to tell our story. Thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you, Travis. That's amazing. I know whenever we've hit the Oregonian, it has just boosted whatever we've got in there is even for tourism. So this will help with that business community also, and making sure that we have a well community makes it somewhere appealing. Philip Brady.
Thank you, Philip Brady. I'm the candidate for County Commissioner, position number three. I'm having a kickoff event, virtual kickoff event, this Sunday evening. I, about 5 to 6. I'll put a link to it in the chat box. Thanks. Hope to see you.
Thank you. Philip Masher.
Good morning, Philip Masher, Southern Bay's Real Estate. I wanted to mention the current exhibit at the Art Center. It's called Contemporary Native Voices, prints from the Crow's Shadow Institute of the Arts. It goes until March 26, and it's very well worth checking out. Really fantastic. And then I also wanted to mention that my wife, April Streeter, is offering donation-based yoga every morning, 7:30 to 8. And if you know anybody, and that's online, Zoom, if you know anybody who is interested in that, let me know, and I'll send you the email where you can get access to that.
That's sweet of April to do. Thank you. Tell her thank you for us.
Thank you.
Corliss Marsh.
Good morning, everyone. Corliss Marsh with Habitat for Humanity, the Senior Center, and the Library. Scott kind of stole what I was going to say, so I want to just offer Scott that so he can say that he's retired. So in a couple of days, he'll be able to say he's retired.
I think we need to make him a t-shirt that says, "I am really retired." All right, Bill Lennox.
Hi there. Oops. Yeah, hi. Good morning, everybody. I'm with Six Servers Dispute Resolution Center, also with the Dallas Beautification Committee. We're working on a big project for the Dells and trying to coordinate a tree program potentially. And so, and see, let's see, the other thing I'm working on, we're working with developing a more comprehensive working relationship with all the entities in our community. Thank you.
Dan Richardson.
Hello, good mornings. I don't want to steal any of my colleagues' thunder, so I will mention only that one thing, which is, for the first time in maybe three years, we're going to do a citywide cleanup. Party, get together, a community work party in early May, so kind of keep your eyes out for that. It will be fun, as well as good for our town.
Great. Thank you. Dawson, did you want to say anything this morning?
Nope, I just happy to be here. Everyone, I'm Dawson Quentin. I'm the Legislative Director for Representative Greg Smith, and I'm I'm always off-camera for these because I'm always traveling to the Capitol, so just happy to listen in. Thank you.
Perfect. You sure you don't want us to show us the view while you're traveling? Just kidding. All right, Stephanie, did you want to hop on? Are you traveling also?
I am good, if you can hear me all right. Stephanie Bowen with North Wasco County School District. Tonight, we are having an open community forum for our innovative programming, and that's tonight at 6:00 PM at our Watanaka campus. You're welcome to come in person, or there will be a Zoom link available on our website and our social media page to log in that way as well.
Great, thank you. Sylvan? I'm not sure. Sylvan Shaw, did you want to introduce yourself? Oh, you're up there. You are muted and froze. There you are. I can see your smile. Okay, tell you what, Sylvan, why don't you drop a note into the chat box so we just know who you are, and if there's anything that you want to do for announcements, because we would love to know who you are and all of those things, and if there's anything going on. And hang on just one second. There we go. And so with that, really quick, the chamber has a lot going on before I go on to Scott, and we have many different activities. I've started back up. The biggest thing is Cherry Festival is in the course of happening, and we are planning it all. So that will be April 22 through the 24th. I am also bringing a fishing tournament qualification for a pro tour in May. I can't give you a whole lot of details, but we will be releasing at least the Community Days activity on the Saturday, because if we tell somebody the pro tour, what's going on, those pros will come and practice in our waters. So we don't want to do that. We don't want to give away the, the location. But that will be happening in May, and we're making that pro tour into so that one of those days is a Community Days, and they will be fishing with a pro. So we're going to have a little competition in our community with people coming in and fishing with the pro and see who gets the bigger fish, along with a whole bunch of other things down at the Dallas Down Visitor Center. We're going to load that up with vendors and just have some community fun in May. So that'll be going on there. And with that, I am going to let Scott Randall, our City Councilor, take over from here and give us some updates and have time for some Q and A.
Thanks, Lisa, and thank you, everyone, for having me. I'm a little humbled. I saw your, your guest list coming up. Several distinguished guests, so as I say, I'm humbled by that. I'll just talk most about, starting off, most recently, what we talked about Monday night at the City Council Meeting. The Dog River Project, and that, that is a, an upgrade to the, the pipeline, bringing the water to the city, the water infrastructure. They purchased, the council agreed to purchase about 13,000 feet of new pipeline to replace the old dilapidated pipeline, which I think is, some of it's 100 years old, made out of wood. So it'll be a, a big improvement for our water infrastructure, and that kind of goes along with the planned improvements to the port as part of the agreement with Google for improving that water infrastructure out there. The other thing that came up was Mid-Columbia Community Action Council and their Planned Navigation Center. It's going to be out on West Second, West Seventh Street. I believe that's like behind Coastal, if I'm not mistaken. They were donated that parcel of land from a community member, and they have secured about half of the funding they need to construct the, the center. They've got about 2.8 out of, needed 5.8 million. The purpose of the Navigation Center is to address the shelter and service needs of the homeless, and what that will do is streamline those services and improve operational efficiency for all the different partners, I guess, as partners or providers that will be in that, that Navigation Center. And establish a permanent location for the, the palace shelters. As you know, the, the palace shelters now are out on a parcel of city-owned property, city-owned right-of-way out by the Dallas Cherry Growers. There's 18 of these palace shelters that each one of them can house two individuals, so a total of 36. People are being provided housing out there. There's also, I believe, a sanitation center. I think last time I went out there, they had a sanitation trailer, so they have showers available out there. It's kind of been fenced, and there's some privacy and stuff. So if you haven't been out there to see what's going on, it's worth a look. So the, the Navigation Center is coming. Again, they have to raise another, about $3 million to, to begin construction. Trying to see if I have a list here of the different service partners. So you've got the Oregon Human Development Corporation, Columbia Gorge Health Council, Bridges to Health, Nextdoor, Natchee, Wana Housing Center for Living, Mid-Columbia Housing Authority, and One Community Health. And as I said, it's out on West Seventh Street. And I think that's all I have for the Navigation Center. And that was, that was presented to us by Kenny LaPointe, who's the director. Also, on Monday, we had, we talked about Vision 2040, the visioning process. There was a survey conducted last fall. They had about 430 respondents. And some of the key themes, key themes that came out of that survey was the people desired for the their vision for the, for the Dells, for the future, is upgrade the high school and public health facilities, support affordable housing opportunities, and small business diversity, maintain bike paths, walking trails, river access, alternate ways to get around, continue to revitalize downtown with mixed-use development and places to gather, and to honor diversity, honor diverse history with family-friendly cultural events. And that will be, there was some thought that not enough opportunities provided to, to gather input from the community members. So there will be another survey, I believe, being sent out and as well as a, a town hall meeting to, to collect people's ideas and thoughts about what direction the city should take in the future. And I think that was pretty much it for Monday's meeting. We, we got some, some pretty significant things coming up in the Dells. I think the biggest thing in my mind is the proposed relocation of the Mid-Columbia Medical Center out to Kramer Field, and then relocate, relocating those, those ball fields to the proposed sports complex on the 30-acre parcel of land that the county received from Google, which is out by Norcore. This is a huge deal, I think. I think it's, it will transform the city in a big way. Obviously, it's, it's an improvement, improvement for the, the healthcare services in terms of location. Their location up on a hill is problematic and, and by going out to Kramer Field, more centrally located, easier to get to, a larger campus, but also that, the property that's currently where the, the hospital currently sits will be opened up and available to increased housing opportunities and developments. So I think that's, that's a huge, I think, transformational change that may be coming about soon. Does anybody have any comments or ideas, thoughts, opinions about, about that?
So we do have, we do have one question. We have one question regarding the city survey results. Are those available on the website? Do you know?
Which, which website are you referring to?
The city's website. Yeah.
I, you know, I'm not sure. I'd have to, I, I don't know where you would find those results. The, actually, I think if you went, if the minutes from the meeting are available, or I, or the agenda from the council meeting, they would be on
Okay.
the responses would, would be on that, 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 that website, yes.
All right, so I will quickly look, Dan. Most likely, that's in the agenda on the city swipe, so I'll find that really quick and find, and put the post up, so.
I brought, I brought this one sheet from that. I had, I had a whole handout, but I just brought one of the sheets, the one that I read off of, so I apologize. I don't have that information where that was.
That's okay. And so any other questions at the moment? They're still drinking coffee, Scott, sorry.
Yeah, I just thought that, like I say, I'm, I'm actually pretty excited about this, this proposed move, Mid-Columbia Medical Center going out to the, the, that location. I think that's, I think that's, like I say, a huge thing for the city, if it trans, if it transpires. Something else coming up for the city is we are recruiting for a new city manager. Our current manager, Julie Kruger, will be retiring soon. And so we put out, we've hired a recruitment firm out of Seattle to, to canvass the nation for applications. They've been received, and, and we're going to begin that process of interviewing and screening for a new city manager. And so that's, that's, that'll be a big thing for the, for the city. Waldogs in downtown Main Street will be doing their murals this spring. I think that was scheduled for last year, but they were canceled. So I, I believe as many as 19 murals are planned for the downtown area. Several of them are actually being have already been approved through the Historic Landmarks Commission. A few of them, two of them were approved last week, and upcoming, there'll be a couple more that they're going to be applications for murals on a couple of buildings. One of them I know is the City Police Building. What else? As Dan Richardson mentioned, there's an upcoming community cleanup. It's different from the, the beautification committee's monthly cleanups. This one will be, I believe, encouraging citizens to, to clean up their properties, you know, whether it's painting or, or pick up the yards and lawns, and whatever they have, I believe, will be put out on the curb to be picked up by the sanitation services. So there'll be some coordinating and, and some some outreach, some outreach to the community to let them know this is happening as it, as it gets scheduled. Another big thing that I think is happening is the land use amendments that were, as a result of some legislative action, which provides for increased, or I guess more dense housing. Smaller lots are going to be approved and, and more units per lot. I think up to three units, like a triplex can be built on a, what, what used to be traditionally single housing, single-family dwelling lots. So that's, that's something that was kind of handed down to us by the Oregon State Legislature, and so we have amended our codes to, to allow for that. The Tony's Building, construction is going to, or not, not construction, destruction, demolition of the Tony's Building will be going forward. I think they have to get a lot of permits and testing done for asbestos abatement, lead abatement, that type of thing, but that is scheduled to be demolished, and that property will be repurposed for some other community event or
Hey, Scott, do we have, did you, I'm sorry if I missed it, did we have a projected month when that might happen?
The demolition?
Uh huh.
Yeah, I don't think so. I think they're still, like I say, it's still in the process of getting the permits, I think, for, for all the different hazard, hazardous materials that we have, have to be dealt with. I know it was scheduled at one point, but it had been delayed because of that. So, but they are, but they are moving forward with it. That has been, that's the decision that has been made, that it will be demolished.
Do you think that will happen before April or in April or later?
I, yeah, I doubt before April, yeah.
Okay, all right, we have a cherry festival to put on in the downtown. Like, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be, it, it may be late summer even before that.
Okay, I can handle that. Thank you.
We also received, the city also received an annual financial report, and we are, you know, financially, the city is doing very well, very healthy report. There are some improvements going to be happening out on West Sixth Street, turning lanes, I believe, out by, let's see, I think around like By Mart, that area, By Mart, and what else is out there? Anyway, there's a stretch of this West Sixth Street where there's some problems with the turning, I think if you're westbound, turning to go south, and so they're going to make a turning lane along a certain stretch of that West Sixth Street to improve traffic flow. I think I've covered pretty much everything I had on my list here. Upcoming events, there's going to be a MontiGrove event in town. I think it's next Saturday, the 26th, put on by the, the Dallas Main Street, and I think tickets are still available. It sounds like it's going to be a pretty, pretty enjoyable and entertaining event. Again, that's Saturday night. It's, it's the 21 and over, and they'll be taking, they'll be having that at the, in the old Chronicle Building. So like I say, I think it's going to be a sell-out crowd, so if you're interested in going, I encourage you to get your tickets while you can, and those are available, I believe, from downtown Main Street or Last Stop Saloon, I think, is where you can get them. Also, coming up, as part of my day job, I'll be going to a, on the 25th of this month, I'll be attending a, a skilled trades job fair in Redmond. I think there'll be like 500 students will be attending, and I will unofficially be discussing the opportunities available at the Columbia Gorge Community College with the Skill Center they have there, as was earlier mentioned about the, the aviation technology, the construction technology, the skilled trades that are going to be offered at the Community College, and also career opportunities in the Mid-Columbia area, so excited about that, looking forward to promoting our area. And that's about all I have for now. Does anybody have any, any questions or any, anything they want to talk about as far as upcoming things for the Dells?
I am going to make a note before I call on Dan. Scott, can we put some time on the calendar after you go to the job fair? I've had several partners who are interested in doing something here in the Dells.
Okay.
So I'd kind of like to know how that worked in the attendance and participation. And so I've had several larger employers and some small ones seeking some help with that, so let's get something on the calendar and pick your brain and see how it went.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, with that, Dan Spotts, you had a question.
Thank you, Lisa. And Lisa, to your comment just now, we would like to plug into that conversation as well, definitely. Oh, Scott, regarding a different topic completely, and you had mentioned it before, the Dog River Pipeline. Are there any plans for micro hydro as part of that?
You know, that's, that's a good question. I don't know if there's any plans for that. I know Hood River's irrigation district has had some, some small hydro on their irrigation system for, for decades. Yeah, good question. I don't know if there are any plans, none that I know of, anyway.
Just kind of curious if there is, and I certainly don't want to get into any delays or anything like that, but the electromechanical technology program at the college with renewable energy, that began with, with hydroelectric, and it's
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so I, there might be a training opportunity or partnership, who knows, but maybe we can catch up.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I believe, I believe small hydro has actually got quite a bit of like, like funding available. I think that's considered, you know, one of the, one of the renewable resources they want to promote and and support.
Okay, thanks.
Dan Richardson has a question.
Well, more like commentary, Lisa, but thank, thank you, Scott. There's quite a lot going on in our little town now and in the, in the near future. It's actually kind of exciting. Hopefully mostly all positive developments. I would encourage people, everybody here, to sort of help. I'm underlining a point, I think, that's already been made. Help us get word out about the virtual town hall and the follow-up survey. So we did a, a visioning survey. You know, that went out to, I don't know, 600 people, and there were some flyers and some additional outreach. But there's going to be essentially a repeat, a second survey, and a more energetic outreach effort yet, and we expect to see some material, some flyers, some posts and such coming out imminently. If you don't get those, please let me know, and I will pass that on. If you do, please share it with any membership groups or email lists or that sort of thing. It's okay if people get the same note more than once. In fact, it's probably helpful. And this is really an opportunity for people that perhaps don't always get involved with public affairs or community service or that sort of thing to speak in a, in a way that's really a low barrier to entry, and that might be helpful to have a pretty wide cross-section of ideas go into the survey for us. It's really, to my mind, somewhat of developing our marching orders for the years to come. You know, we're not going to be just working in the city or the community on, on survey results, but they will really, I think, help guide some of our efforts and hopefully also develop some new ideas. So pass the word.
Thank you, and let us know how we can help with that at all. Travis Dre.
Thanks. Thanks, Lisa. So I just wanted to say, come around, thank you so much for, one, taking the time to kind of talk us through the initiatives and the objectives and outlining the survey, as well as the support for the campus and the athletic complex. I just wanted to kind of give everyone a little, maybe they know, maybe you don't know, but I think Commissioner Hagy was on a few weeks ago and just kind of referenced the 50% split of the CSF dollars that was recommended to the tax districts, and the tax, the tax districts, I believe, get kind of an educational session on the 28th, and then sometime in early March, they'll actually make a vote on how those dollars, if they get split up, will they get split up? 50% to themselves, 50% to a greater good project, potentially like the athletic complex, so. If they get split up, will they get split up fifty percent to themselves, fifty percent to a greater good project potentially like the athletic complex, so. I did meet with the president of the Parks Board Chair yesterday, Tracy DuJake, and we kind of talked through this and I know the Parks or the part that. The Parks Grab Tax District is very much in support of the Greater Good Project, so if there's other folks that you know, all of you with your massive networks. Within those districts, if it's a greater good project that you support, it may be worth just kind of voicing to them, hey, here's an opportunity for you. Your vote to make a significant change, a monumental change in our community, so. Getting those, like fifty percent of those dollars would put the project really into drive where the county can begin, you know. Looking at how those thirty-five acres best set up for our community, what we put together on November third was just a proposal that. Demonstrated the use of all those athletic fields from RV parking to turf fields, et cetera, but it gives the county a chance to really kind of. Push forward, it also gives the Mid-Columbia Medical Center a chance to start looking at the campus, begin working very closely with Sheriff McGill. And the Columbia Resolution Center as well, I start looking at our own campus and turn it into affordable housing, so there's a lot of moving parts, but. The first lever has to get pulled and it starts with February twenty eighth, when the districts, I think, get their educational session, so if you all are. Have the, have some colleagues, friends, neighbors that serve our community in those capacities, it'd be great to just kind of pass that word on. So I just appreciate it, thank you, Councilmember Randall.
Thank you Travis, any other questions? Well Scott, I'm gonna do something I do every now and then, when we have a little extra time. Do you have questions of us, we are your partners in this community, you have several in this room, you have their undivided attention. So do you have questions for any of our organizations or comments for us or how we can help you?
Actually, I think Travis mentioned the Resolution Center, which I think is also gonna be part of. The proposed campus on the Kramer Field location, that, that I think. Would probably kind of tie in with the Navigation Center, which will be just right down the road, as far as services to the. To the, I guess homeless, but also the, you know, the mental health and the. The probably see with homelessness happening all over the country, I think that's, I think there are things happening. The Navigation Center, the Resolution Center that are upcoming, that I think will help mitigate a lot of the issues that we're having with the homeless and the mental health. In our city, that's just kind of a final comment. But yeah, no questions for, for the others.
Dan Spots, I love it, I love all your questions.
No, it's more, more a point of information, Scott, you probably are teaming up already, but Amber Tilton from Corps of Engineers is also going to that.
Yeah, that's, that's actually who I'm going with.
Oh good, okay, okay. She had reached out to us also, so I, good.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay, I'll jump in again, Grenada Block, Grenada Block, how are we doing?
Um, I think the recreation, the old recreation lanes building, there's the continuing with the construction on that. I think the facade, I believe, is is pretty much complete, it's, I think the interior work is still going on, I believe it's gonna be like three different businesses inside. Some outdoor seating, I think there's some things planned for the basement, I haven't really been following that very closely, but I think they're, they're, they're. Getting close to being complete.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yes, and one of those businesses will be an ice cream candy store. And and that will be actually a family member who will own and manage that piece of it, so. They've been doing intensive research and I don't know if it's real research or just an excuse to go get ice cream all over the state, so. But they've been looking into that seriously, so that we'll have something right in the downtown, we know we have one other ice cream shop by the Civic. But this will give people choices and from a tourism point of view, if we have two to three of those types of businesses of a similar kind. Then people draw to us, if we only have one, they don't, they for some reason want choices in groups of three. So this will be a great job to add that and be able to have ice cream on both ends of downtown, so then that way you can walk in between and work off the calories and go get more. So yeah, it's a great plan.
I, I will volunteer to help taste test if need be.
I will, I will call you Stephanie, we'll just Instagram the heck out of it, right?
Love it, I also have a couple of little girls that I'm sure.
Oh yeah, mhm, and they're cuties, that would work. Just so you guys know, I'm actually not in the DOWS right now, I am in Portland and I'm sitting in a hotel because the DOWS is at. The Northwest Sportsman Show with a ten by thirty booth representing our community. And all of the fun things and activities we have going on in our community, so I will be here. Working that booth from about ten till eight thirty every day through Sunday, promoting our community, we have. Tierra de Lobos in our booth, representing one of our small businesses and doing wine samples. We have mini games and all those things to do, pulling, we have a great giveaway that's about a twelve hundred buck. Value that the Chamber went and bought gift cards from all over our businesses so that we could support our small businesses instead of asking for a handout. Knowing that times are still stuff tough, so we're giving that away and then just promoting our outdoor recreation and attractions and. I will say, I think I stirred up quite the buzz yesterday for our Neon Sign Museum, this was the right demographic that, that just like. Caught their attention very quickly and they're like, what, no way, you have that in your town, so that was kind of fun to share. Along with some of our other historical attractions, but so we're stirring up the buzz, we actually had a large amount yesterday. Of people that were not fishermen, so that was great, we have the right things in our booth to attract. Another audience besides the fishing, and so I was very pleased with how many people we came through and talked to yesterday, so. That is where I'm at all week, so don't go looking for me at the office, I won't be there, and with that, Bill Lennox has a question.
Yeah, speaking of the Neon Sign Museum, I think that's a really good thing to talk about, Lisa. And but the irony that I see is that we have neon signs throughout and places in our community. Like the Sears Roebuck and the Flying A, but the, but the building itself, the neon, the mute, the museum itself doesn't have a thing. And it strikes me as being very odd, and I understand there's probably historical landmark things going on with the building, but there still should be a way. For people coming through town to be able to know that that museum exists, and at the present time, there's nothing that does that that I'm aware of. Just a point, I think it's important because it is a special museum and I think it would be doing a lot better for our community if there was a way to get. The word out.
And I'll, I'll talk to David on that and just see, you know, maybe it's something that it could be a standalone structure where the sign is. Rather than on the building, because I'm sure you're right, there's sure there's some historical factors there. And so maybe it could be something that's on that physical sign, there could be a neon representation. I know that I just need to find it in my budget also, because he has a very special sign that is Chamber of Commerce. And it actually says Chamber of Commerce and he needs to refurbish it, and then we want to put it on our building and I will be the one building, it actually says what we are. So I'm super excited about that, he brought it to our office and showed us what it looked like, and so now I just gotta find it in my budget so I can pay him to refurbish that. And hang it up on my thing, so we're pretty excited about that, but. And Dawn Hurt already gave her excitement of approval that somehow we would make that work on our historical building. So it's kind of exciting to see that, but I will talk to him, that's a good point, Bill, so, but it was fun yesterday to really. And of course, I always have fun talking about our highlights of our community and just our community overall, so. We had a lot of fun yesterday just talking about people, some had been there, some had never been there. Some had made it to Hood River, but they hadn't gone that twenty more miles, so we convinced them yesterday it was worth to go the twenty more miles. And so we did have fun and like I said, I'll be there through Sunday, so I'll have lots more opportunities to talk about it, so. And any other questions, comments, you guys can share, because we have time, Scott's giving you lots of time unless he has some other comments, but. We can just, you know, what's going on in your organization that we all need to know about?
Yeah, I'll pop in here, Lisa, for just a second, I've got a question. So Scott. Was appointed to City Council and edged out many a good person for that appointment, including me, so I'm gonna put him on the spot here. Scott. Have there been any surprises for you, anything you weren't expecting that you have found? During your term of service on the council so far?
Yeah, thanks Dan. I think the biggest surprise, I thought the council would be like a collegial type thing where you all kind of like. Knew each other, and I know COVID kind of changed, I actually, I don't think we've met in person maybe once or twice since I've been on the council, because I was actually. Appointed when COVID was kind of like hitting the community, so. That might have an impact, but I think also just, I didn't, I wasn't aware of the fact that you can't have more than three councillor members together at one time, or it's considered a public meeting, so. I thought we'd be like all kind of know how each other stood on different issues, just because we know each other and we talk a lot, but there's really not that much going on, I mean, there's side conversations between. Individual council members, I know, but, but that's, that was kind of a surprise for me, it's a little bit different, but, but again, I'm looking forward to. When we can meet back in person, you know, the chamber's been remodeled, and I think we've used it once, I think, for a work session, but. Yeah, so, so anyway, I'm looking forward to a chance we can have, you know, little side conversations in person. Before the meeting, after the meeting, that type of thing, so that's kind of the biggest, the biggest, I guess, misconception I had about how. How it would be on the council, but I've been enjoying it quite a bit. I really do like doing what we do.
Give me a call when you get back in town, it's been a while since you and I had.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Face to face and we should do that.
Yeah.
You know, with that note, I want to make sure that, and I've got two of you on here, so I can tell you this. Um, my office is always open, you know, if any city councillor ever wants to come and have a chat, ask us what's going on, connect with me. Let me know how I can help you, looking at some of that economic development, any of those parts and pieces, my office is always there. I would love to connect with you guys on a consistent basis, so see if that can fit into your crazy schedules anywhere. And let me know, so obviously, we can't have all of you in the same room with me at the same time, so I would appreciate, you know, just the connectivity, even if it's just once a quarter. Reaching out, seeing how tourism goes, see how the chamber's doing, how our businesses are, how they're really are hanging in there, and all of those different factors.
So Scott, this is Brian Tuck, what do you consider the most critical issues facing our community in the next year, two or three or four?
Uh, thanks, good question, a lot of changes coming up, a lot of, you know, and change always, you know, causes upheaval in people's lives and. And there's, there's gonna be some people who aren't happy with the way things are going, the developments that are taking place, you know, with Google and with, you know, the proposed. Construction of the, or relocation, I should say, of the, the medical center, I, I think really the. The issue of homelessness, I think that's, that's one that I see it every day as I drive through town. And we all know what's going on in the, in the larger cities and how bad it can get if it's not dealt with appropriately, and I don't know, you know, there's, it's a very complex issue. Lot of different angles of approach to, to try to address it, the different issues, but we need to stay focused on that, I think, and, and try to. Try to make it the best situation as we can for the community, because like I say, there's, there's no easy answers, but I think we're heading the right direction, I think this Navigation Center. And the Resolution Center, that's, that's a big deal, that's part of the problem is nowhere for these people to go for, for the, the help and the resources that they need. So that's just my, my opinion, what I think is the biggest issue, basically, not just our community, but I think communities throughout the, throughout the country.
I will say that the city kicked it in gear this last week, and we had that car fire down by the chamber over the weekend, last weekend, and. There was a tremendous mess before the car fire and it was just building up on both sides of the sidewalk, it was awful. We had some tourists leave before they even got out of their cars to our office and just because of the presence. And after the fire on that Monday, oh my gosh, the city crews and some other pieces and parts cleaned that up. And even hauled the car away and all of the other truck load full of garbage that was sitting on the streets. Just in that one little partial block, so I appreciated it greatly, I was ready to send you guys a note with pictures, because I was there on the weekend and. The crews showed up on Monday and I said, never mind, I'll be a good girl and not say anything, but. If I was losing tourists the week before, because the weather was nice, but people were very agitated walking all around the chamber, so. I appreciated the cleanup, that does help, it detours them for another couple of weeks and then they start coming back, so. It is something we need to address quickly, otherwise, we're not gonna have a visitor center that's very welcoming to the outside people, so. Thanks for making efforts there.
You know, that's, that's interesting, Lisa, I, I'd heard a little bit about that fire, but I was gonna ask, I mean, I'm kind of curious. My impression was that, that area around the chamber, because that was kind of the hotspot for a while, that's where the most complaints we're getting from the citizens about homelessness. And then when the palace shelters came in, it seemed like that helped quite a bit, i- is that just, does it kind of go in cycles, like you say, is it get, get. Better and then kind of get worse and back and forth, or is it?
Well, the palace shelter has very strict rules on who can stay there. And you have to abide by the rules, well, these are the people who don't abide by any rules.
Yeah.
And that's who's hanging out at the chamber, so this is the worst of the worst, we, we have the worst of the worst, we've got them. Either dropping their drawers, shooting up, screaming, hollering, leaving garbage, destroying our property, I've had to replace lights. I've replaced windows, I've put up security cameras that the police all have and they use regularly. And, you know, the chamber is putting out expense, every time we turn around, we're having to have something repaired. And so these are the people who do not qualify for the palace shelters.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they don't care either, they're, they're in a state, they aren't aware that they don't care. And, you know, so this is, and this is what's greeting our people as soon as they pull in the parking lot. And so it's a tough one, it does not have a simple solution, and I want to be a part of it, because obviously, my business depends on it. To have that clean area and very welcoming, so let me know however I can help in any situation, I'm there. Looks like Dan Spots has a question.
Sorry about that, Lisa, but keep on coming up with ideas here, Scott, going back to that job fair, I touched bases with Amber about that. We're going to have some reprinted stock on all of our skills programs, probably by the first week, if not the end of this week. How can I, how can I get those to you, City Hall?
Pardon me?
Leave them at City Hall, how do I get those to you?
You, you can do that, or we could arrange a, a meeting, I could pick them up from you directly, I, do you work up at the campus, is that, do you have an office up there?
I'm working remotely almost all the time, I'll be around, you know, we'll make it happen, so.
Okay, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Do you have my, my number or?
I do not, if you don't mind, or, or can I catch? I'll, I'll email you, I'll email you, Scott.
Okay, that's, yeah, okay, perfect, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
So with that, any other questions, if not, I'll give you a few minutes left in your morning to go drink a second cup of coffee before you have to get to your real jobs. Alright, with that, thanks so much, Scott, I appreciate your openness, I appreciate your candidacy, that just means sharing and what's going on and. I look forward to connecting with you later, so with that, everyone, have a great Thursday and I will see you guys next week.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you.